I would like to make a motion that we approve the Town Board meetings minutes for the April 11th, 2018.
Second?
Any board comments or discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept abstract number 16 dated April 18th, 2018, and abstract number 17 dated April 25th, 2018, as presented.
Second?
Any board discussion or comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the current budget modifications as listed and the 2017 year-end budget mods and amendments as listed on the year-end closing.
Any board comments or discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any abstentions? Tonight, we'll go to the Board of Ethics. We have with us our chairman, Bill Bradley of the Board of Ethics. If you'd come up, please, Bill. We made some changes, and Bill actually made some changes to the ethics rules and regulations in conjunction with our HR manager. Some of the things, if you want to comment on them, we'll talk about them later on.
Basically, it's not working.
It's not working? It is working.
Yeah, it is working. Basically, what they were cosmetic changes. For example, one of the things we put in was to use Robert's Rules of Orders at all meetings. And Kathy Baranty pointed out a few other things that were basically changes in wording. We didn't really add anything other than the Board using Robert's Rules of Order. I think we made maybe four minor changes. So the document you have in front of you is basically what we started out with, with just a few minor changes. And I hope we don't ever have to meet, so thank you.
I do too. But if we do, I expect to do.
Yes, we'll be there.
Okay. Yeah, some of the things-
But I want to thank you and Kathy Baranty for the help that you gave us, especially Kathy pointing out some of the things that needed to be changed and cleaned it up. So that was good.
Okay. There was just, again, to the chairman's point, some minor changes to the wording. Does anyone have any questions for the chairman while he's here?
Thank you.
There being none. Thank you, Bill. I will move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the amendments to the Town and Sisro Board of Ethics and internal rules and regulations as proposed.
Second?
Any board comments or discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. We also have with us tonight Bill Meyer. Bill is our veterans advocate and coordinator. Bill would like to address the board.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I have a few very brief items. First of all, if you remember, we had a public forum on December 6th of 2017 at the North Syracuse Library. I have to tell you, it was a big hit. We absolutely packed the community room down at the North Syracuse Library. In addition to myself and the supervisor, we had a representative from Community Development and the County Veterans Service Office. So we had a great opportunity for the residents to ask questions directly. And I got to tell you, it was so much of a hit, I'm still getting phone calls from that event. So people appreciate it, and they got some good information. And we have a lot of needy folks there. We qualify, and we're making our best effort to make sure everybody qualifies. The next item that's coming up, I'll be at the Senior Health Fair, which is going to be at May 30th at the Dr. Evansville, which is another opportunity to have a public-private partnership. So I'm-
Oh, sorry, Bill. Hang on. Is there another discussion going on? I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, Bill.
So again, it'll be nice, opportunity to get together, and I'll have all my regular materials so we can answer the folks' questions. If you remember, last year, we had a number of events on the Vietnam War 50th anniversary. And again, at that time, we were encouraging community partners. And again, if an organization in town would like to partner with us, I urge them to contact either myself and supervisor so we can have events as great as last year. And finally, I put before you a trifold on Honor Flight. You've probably seen some things about Honor Flight previously, and this weekend, it'll be another flight. And so, next time, I'm going to have one of the spokesmen from Honor Flight come to the Board, if that is agreeable, and go into some of the details. But some of the things that we're trying to do is have posters like this set up, and hopefully, the Board will approve this. So it has a tear off, so folks want information, they can, you know, call that number or use the website. It's a great service for all veterans. It doesn't have to be during a certain time. It doesn't have to be certain branch of the service. They're all welcome. The flight to DC is free charge to the veteran, and there are guardians that go with the veteran. I highly encourage you, if you would like to, to become a guardian. I think it's a fantastic trip. You're going to learn a lot, and it's a great service to those who serve. So if there are no further questions, I guess that's the end of our remarks.
I just want to say, when we put this program, Bill and I talked last year, and we talked about a bunch of things. We're very lucky to have Bill, for those of you who are new here tonight. Bill was not only a former county legislator, but then he was head of the Veterans Program for Onondahie County. Bill volunteered, and our thought was, along with veterans and spouses of veterans, also kind of ties in with our senior program, our outreach. We would reach out to the neediest seniors in our community who will not ask for help, they're too proud, and then try to identify them, and then see if there are services out there to help them that they may need. That program's been very successful. And Bill has done an outstanding job, and I don't say things, those of you who know me, unless I mean it. But Bill's done an outstanding job with veterans and spouses of veterans. And that last event that we had was absolutely standing room only. We ran out of chairs for veterans and spouses of veterans who, in our community, really need some help with things like roofs, windows, maybe water heaters, maybe heating systems, that type of thing. And they won't ask for it. So Bill, thank you very much for all your efforts on that. It's been well received.
Thank you for the promotion. I was the Assistant Director of the County Purchase-
There you go.
Okay, I beg you.
Great. Thank you. Next, we will, we have a presentation. We have folks here from Abundant Solar Power, and Chris Carrick. And I've invited them to give a presentation to the Board. I had met with them, just some background, a couple of years ago. Chris Carrick was putting together a solar project for the county. Correct me where I'm wrong. And basically, the whole thing was, well, we can probably drive a good deal on solar power if we can aggregate the towns and the, you know, if we can get all the towns to sign on board with this, we have some better hitting power. So anyway, because Chris knows how we feel about being a leader in the county, so we signed, I think we were the first signatory, to sign onto that and say, yes, we were very interested in doing it. In the meantime, a couple of years have transpired. Chris will talk to you about Abundant Solar and how they came to be chosen. And I've had two meetings with them, one with our attorney, who's here tonight, and another meeting just about 10 days ago, I think, in my office. We had, I thought, a very productive meeting. So anyway, our commitment is to improve our environment, and reduce the cost of government, and reduce the cost of doing business. That's my background. And I think this abundant proposal will do just that. So having said that, I will turn it over to Chris Carrick.
Thank you, Supervisor. So as the supervisor said, as a regional planning agency, we try to encourage and contribute to cooperation whenever we can. That's our mission as an agency. So we're actually working with a collection of 24 communities, including some public authorities, like the Board of Oscego and Aqua, across our five county footprint. So it's more than just Onondahie County. So we've got quite a lot of communities that are participating. And we're very pleased and proud to present Abundant Solar Power to you tonight. They're going to do the bulk of the presentation, so they can get into some of the details of what this opportunity might mean for the Town of Sisro. But just to give you a sense of the overall portfolio of projects we've put together, as I mentioned, 24 participating organizations, 35 individual project sites. They range from 50 kilowatts on a highway garage all the way up to 10 or even 15 megawatts. So altogether, we have the potential to bring 40 to even 60 megawatts of new solar power in Central New York, in our five counties. That would be more than a doubling of what we have. Right now, we have about 40 or so megawatts in our five counties. So we are going to advance the whole region in terms of our Regional Sustainability Plan, the Vision CMY Plan, advance the state goals, and advance each community's goals. And I know that the supervisor's keen to be a leader in this area, and we want to help the town do that. With that, I'll turn that presentation over to Melissa Clark to start from Abundant Solar. Thanks.
Good evening. Thanks so much for making time for us. So very quickly, what we'd like to highlight for you tonight is basically what we've been doing since we partnered with the folks at the Central New York Planning Board. So what have we done today? Where are we today? What are the next steps? We'd like to help you to understand what the solar scenarios are in New York State today. Regulation is in a constant state of flux here. The options that we possess for the Town of Sisro. We'll look at proposed, this is plan here, but in the intervening 10 days since we met with the supervisor, there is actually plan in Z, plural, and then at least in PPA, just to give you context for how we move the project forward. So very briefly, as the supervisor and Chris alluded to, the CMY Regional Planning Board identified this opportunity to aggregate municipal opportunities and solarize Central New York back in 2015. They hired a very competent renewables consulting firm, Optani, and they evaluated a very large cross-section of sites, and they sifted it down to approximately 35 sites, which would reflect the portfolio today. So those 35 sites were identified in the RFP that was announced in November 2016. Abundant participated in that competitive process, and we were selected as the preferred developer through that review. And back in April, early May of 2017, we took the folks from the planning board out to visit a number of sites that we've built, both rooftop and ground map, and we verified that we would move forward with the portfolio. So including production estimates, we engaged LaBella to estimate connection costs at each site. In case you're unaware, to ask questions of the utilities, it's actually a pay-to-play scenario. So we've actually engaged a consulting firm to do a little of that work for us. LaBella does a lot of the actual build work for the utilities, so they have a level of visibility into capacity, substation upgrades and whatnot that wouldn't be available to the general public. So we've gone to the next level, but we haven't actually engaged in interconnection application. We modeled the utility data with the newly rolled-out Value of Distributed Energy Resources regulation that was first tabled for discussion in early 2017, and went through public review, and finally saw numbers attached to the regulation in late September of last year. So it really changed the way renewable energy was going to be compensated for through the utilities, and it was slightly leaner than the previous model. So we needed to model the actual numbers, use the calculators provided, and make sure that we could still stand behind the power purchase agreement rates that we had proposed during the RFP process. So then, we created value assessments for every site, looking at remote net metering versus CDG, which is an acronym for Community Distributed Generation, sometimes called Shared Solar or Community Solar. So we looked at every site, and we did an evaluation of what would present the best opportunity for the individual participating organization. And then, so in September, we got the VDR numbers, and then again, in January, we got the unhappy news that there had been a 30% panel tariff applied to all solar panels, so we had to rework our numbers again in January, just to make sure we could still squeeze out a project. So the process moving forward would be the PPA and lease. That process is underway. We've had a review with all of the participating organizations and their lawyers. We hope that we presented documents that represent the best interests of both the municipal entities and of Abundant, so that we've set up a fair and equitable relationship. We, upon receiving a commitment through the PPA and lease, will engage in the investment of interconnection. And that, actually, we have to have a determination or a confirmation of what type of solar array we're going to agree to in the various constituencies. So once we've agreed to either net metering or community solar for the various sites, we apply for interconnection. We gain certainty around capacity and cost. And then, we start to work with the various teams. So we have to go through the very individualized permitting and approval processes in order to work through the project execution. So I'm actually going to hand off to Galian Black, who also works with us at Abundant, to go through the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for having us, just to be here. In New York State, there's essentially three options for solar. One is behind the meter, where it's on the building, and it's connected on the load side of the utility meter. It feeds the structure, and then any excess is net metered back and forth. It's a good deal for residential typically, but if you have a demand account, then you're unable to offset the delivery portion of your utility bill. Remote net metering is where you site, you site an array in a remote location, and you feed various satellite meters owned by the agency. So we would build a system on a landfill, for instance, have a meter in the field that would be under the town's name, for instance, and that meter and all the production that's generated in that account is then credited towards all of the satellite meters owned by that same agency. Community solar follows the same model, but it expands the eligibility for the receipt of these billing credits or these kilowatt hours that are generated. And so now, you can serve the broader constituency. You can serve residential customers, small businesses, et cetera. This is the graphic of the remote net meter system. On the left, we have the solar array. On the right, all of the buildings would represent town buildings. The power is routed to those buildings virtually through the utility's IT systems, and the bills which, sorry, the billing credits which accumulate in the host generator, that solar farm, are then attributed to each of those as we direct the utility to do so. Community distributed generation, CDG, now look at the buildings on the top right. Those now represent different off-takers, or what we call subscribers. So the building on the left, the blue one, would be all of the town buildings, all their meters, and then residential units and perhaps some small businesses. And the next slide, this describes the interaction. So Abundant on the right builds, buys the equipment, owns, operates, maintains the system. The system on the top, depicted in those solar modules, outputs directly to the utility grid, so we create a connection right to the utility lines. And at that point of connection, there's a utility meter, and all of the billing credits are generated. So every kilowatt hour becomes a dollar amount. It gets converted to dollars on monetary basis, and it starts to fill the town's solar account, which we then work, or sorry, it filled, I'm on CDG now, I apologize. We work with the utility to give them membership information, and the utility then distributes to our subscribers these credits based on who has subscribed to the project. I apologize, I was just describing remote net metering. In any case, the subscribers then pay Abundant for these billing credits at a discount, and we continue the continuum. So for the Town of Sisro, we assessed remote net metering and community distributed generation at first on the landfill site. So I'm going to walk through that part of the presentation, as we did with Supervisor Van Espeke, and I'm going to show you another study as well. We recommend, at this point, we recommended going forward with an R&amp;M project, a remote net metered project at the landfill, to serve just the town's meters. This is going to change a little bit as I move through the proposal, but the town would receive all of these billing credits, and this is the best way to maximize savings, to have one designated remote net metered system. Now we started looking at a second site, so there's actually an opportunity to do both, to do both a CDG and a remote net metered project, and that's on the new transportation facility building. So for this particular project that we looked at, 76-acre parcel, we can fit 982 kilowatts on a portion of that property. That 982 kilowatts will produce roughly 1.2 million kilowatt-hours a year, which offsets about 100% of the kilowatt-hour usage of the town. With a $0.07 PPA price, year-one savings of about $19,000, or approximately 4% of the town's electricity cost. Over 25 years, the savings grow because the cost of electricity grows at a steeper rate than the PPA escalator. So we're looking at about $734,000, approximately 5% of the town's estimated 25 years of utility This, I have to stress, is a desktop model of the landfill, and we've used just this northern portion to put what's roughly about a megawatt, so it's probably on about five acres or so. And the green line depicts an unimproved access road, and the green hash marks around the south, towards the bottom, and up around the northwest corner, that's all wetland that we have to contend with. And there's kind of an odd-shaped red bit in the center that represents a hill, so there's some topography to deal with there. Over time, throughout this process, we would work with engineers and get boots on the ground, and actually work with survey teams and, you know, where the rubber hits the road, really figure out where these modules need to be placed, and taking into account information we get from DNL and interaction with your town engineer to determine where is the best place to put this. And as you can see, there's plenty of other rooms to fit it, so I'm fairly confident we can put it where, somewhere where it's appropriate. But for now, for illustrative purposes, this is what we've designated.
And I just want to, just want to interject that that site we're looking at is the former town dump site, and that's on Ferguson Road. That's been capped. It was last used about 30 years ago, and we'll never be able to use it for anything else. I mean, it's just really kind of dead acreage, so it just makes sense, I think, to us to be able to utilize it, especially to improve the environment.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's a good note that this is a brownfield site, and by putting a solar array on a rooftop or a brownfield, you're not taking away arable land, and you're not in competition with an area where you could put businesses or palaces or such. So these numbers, this is the system. Annual production at the top, sorry, annual usage of the town at the top, essentially paying about .36 cents per kilowatt hour, and that includes all of the town's usage, all of the streetlights, all of the buildings, et cetera. This is based on the utility information that we gathered over the past year, and we understand there are going to be some changes. We're talking with one of your engineers right now to get estimates of the new transportation facilities usage, and trying to isolate some of the old facility as well as the police station, to understand how your expected usage will change, and then the size of the future systems accordingly. So there will be some work there still. In any case, this remote net metered system produces 1.2 million kilowatt-hours, and if they are converted to billing credits at the meter, each of those billing credits, the VDR value at this time was $0.8 and 1/2 cents, and so the credit generated is about $106,000 annually. So again, for a remote net metered system, in this scenario, that goes into the town's account. You have a new utility account, and this system creates value that fills that account. That account is then associated with all of your satellite meters, and that $106,000 is subtracted from all of those meters, from both the supply and the delivery side of the bill.
Nice.
And so, the PPA, now, we're not doing it for free, the billing credits are sold at like retrofits or L E's in the future, or if you were to actually reduce your energy consumption, this sized system would stand, because it would still serve you. What you would do is just take less from the CDG project at the landfill, if we were to do both. So the CDG project allows the town some growing room, because you can subscribe to more, or you can subscribe to less. Of an R&amp;M project, to be clear, it's a contract to purchase everything that comes out of it, at a prescribed rate. So the next steps in the process, as Melissa mentioned, in order for us to move forward with boots on the ground, engineering resources, and to spend the money, move the interconnection applications with the utility, we need to get the PPA and the lease signed. We owe you a slip sheet with termination schedule and production guarantee and some other items. We're going to do that shortly, I believe next week is the drop date for that. After we get those two and we execute the lease and the PPA, and the lease, I should say, I can go into it more in detail later, the lease gives us site access. And it basically gives us access to use the site and to produce electricity, and it lays out the rules. And the PPA, the power purchase agreement, lays out the rest of it. So we go through the interconnection process, and then we need to work with you through the local permitting process. We go through planning, we go through zoning, how does that work exactly, meeting the teams. And then, once we're ready to go, we procure and construct and start to operate. Try and line up our commercial operation date, when everything's mechanically complete, so that it lines up with the timeline of the utilities, so that the system's not sitting fallow. We're somewhat, you know, beholden to the utilities to get their work done, especially for larger projects, so they have the system upgrades on the lines, but-
You mentioned the termination agreement. Just so that we're clear, Neil Jermaine is here tonight. Neil attended the presentation with me. Until we have those last couple of things, we're not prepared to look forward. I'd like the Board to be able to consider and have time to look at it.
Absolutely. Yeah. I have some appendix slides that go into greater detail on the lease and PPA, but I don't have to go through them if you don't want me to. I leave it to you.
No, I'm good.
You're good? All right.
Counselor, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, we'll vet those. We have looked at the agreements as presented, and I'm not going to, you know, vet the entire contract here, but there were some issues that we talked about and some questions that were raised. One of them, as you stated, was the fee for early termination of contract. Early termination is going to be key in your consideration, because it would allow you to terminate for any reason on 60 days' notice. So knowing what it is tells you what the risk is for this contract. I mean, there's a lot of forward-looking statements that are being made about the prices and the savings and all of that that may or may not be true. That was one of the things we talked about. Another thing we talked about is the outside commercial operation date. And they have it as, it could be up to four years out plus, depending on certain circumstances. Heist the town up for quite a bit of time. So you sign here, and they have up to four years out to get the commercial operation date. So one of the things we asked back is, would you consider an out for the town if it's not, if you don't hit the commercial operation date and sign that four-year limit? In other words, you'd have an option to opt out for two years or something along those lines. That was one of the questions we asked. A third issue that came up that was kind of interesting is, we did a solar array project at the planning board, and what we were told is, because the issue of glare came up- at the planning board, and what we were told is, because the issue of glare came up, the first thing they say is, these were built to absorb the sun, there's no glare, there's no glare, there's no glare. It's great. But somebody from Madison County was there, and they had a solar project that did create glare, and it created a dangerous condition, fungal glare. And so they're struggling with that now. And what we're trying to figure out is a way to say, if you do have a dangerous condition, what's the remedy for that? But those are just some of the more prominent issues. But other than that, I mean, the contract will be vetted to detail.
Could I just speak to the glare? We're assembling a package that goes into the detail about module glare. The fact is, there are some modules that perhaps were not treated with an anti-glare. We want the module to absorb as much of the sunlight as possible to produce as much energy as possible. So we can put some stuff forward where you're there. I think we also have to separate the concept, put two concepts, right, actual risk and perceived risk, and understand exactly where these modules are cited. We've got a landfill that's surrounded with trees, and we've got a rooftop system that's east-west, again, behind trees. So I think the issue in Madison County was an array that was actually putting light a couple of times a year onto a highway, which is bad. We don't want to do that. So we'll address all of those when we can. Good. Thank you.
Any questions from the board while we have them here?
I do have a couple.
Please.
What's the cost of implementation?
The cost of implementation to...
Putting the panels up on site?
To the town?
Who is responsible for paying for this site installation?
Abundant is responsible, so it's a turnkey installation. It's like a design-build project. So we've already started spending, and we're responsible for all of our own engineering. We run the seeker, we pay the engineers for all of that, we buy, build, own and operate the system. So right now, you're spending your time, it's the value of your time right now, and it's your attorney fees, or if you need your engineer to review, that type of thing.
If the town were to opt out in two years, you remove all these panels that you're already spent?
Is that opt-out of the contract?
Opt-out of the contract.
So that's what we're referring to as the early termination fee. There's a fee schedule set up where there's basically the net present value, right? What does it cost us to lose this project in years one through 25, 25-year contract? So if you leave in year two, then we're going to need to recoup our investment and our future cash flows that we're losing.
What type of money do you deposit with the town to guarantee your service?
We don't deposit any money. There's a removal fund that we start paying into in year seven, which is the removal... So at the end of the term, at the end of 25 years, if you don't want to extend for another five or 10 years, and you don't want to purchase the system, we will remove it for you. So in years seven through 25, we pay into a fund for the removal of and remediation of the site.
With the roof mount, I mean, the proposed highway garage, if the town opts out, you also in there would be replacing that roof, obviously, because it's going to be not functional.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. So if it's standing seam, we use clamps, S5 clamps, standard for snow, for any kind of equipment that goes on a standing seam roof. So it's non-penetrating. On flat roofs, we use ballasted systems, so we're not penetrating. This is a low-slope roof, we'll have to go through the engineering, but the idea is that you don't harm to the roof. But you're right, if there were any harm done in our installation, we would be responsible for replacing and repairing.
Do you have grants, federal grants involved with this through your installation?
There are no federal grants. Well, there's a tax credit, ITC, the investment tax credit, that our investors monetize. And that's a 30% tax credit on a portion of the array. And then there's the maker's straight-line depreciation, which is, again, a tax benefit. And all of these things are monetized in the first, say, six years of the project. And there's a step-down. So if we don't get the project in by 2019, we lose a portion of that ITC, which gives us enormous incentive to get the project built by the end of 2019. So that's kind of our internal drop-down, drop-dead date, excuse me. The four years is a, oh, boy, what if? We get state grants, so there's a nice service grant. It's the Commercial Industrial Incentive Program through the New York Sun program, and that's based on, it's a production payment that we receive to offset some of the costs of the project.
Well, what is the timeframe for the town realizing its cost savings? Would it be in the, it can't possibly be in the first year because of your project being involved. What is the timeframe for realizing some cost savings?
Right, so in this model, it's year one. Year one savings were...
$19,000.
$19,000.
Okay.
So that's $19,000.
I'm sure that you don't know this answer, but obviously, if it's going to involve all the lighting districts, that is a tax that is paid by the residents, so I would be curious as to how that would be paid back or split up so that their taxes would not be as much. It would be, obviously, it has to be incentive to be credited back to people who get access on these lighting districts.
That's an interesting point. I don't have any visibility into that, but we can look into it, or perhaps we can have more discussion on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, good. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Melissa. Chris, thank you so much.
We need to set a public... Why do I have to go in?
No. No. Chris.
We should have to speak up.
That's okay, I can, but I just didn't think it was. Set a public hearing, move for the adoption of a resolution, set a public hearing commencing at 6:30 on Wednesday, May 9, 2018, to consider the installation of a no-parking sign at the end of Grandview Drive, critical for barber struts and snowfall turnaround.
Sergeant.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. Just a memo here, I guess. The fire department workshop was canceled today. They asked us, Chief Leibertor and Chief Barrett, they asked for some more time to put together their workshop and presentation, so they will come back to us when they are ready, and then we will reschedule another workshop for them.
Sergeant.
New highway facility move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the advertisement of the highway facility construction practice.
Second.
Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Eastern Managed Print Network solution move for the adoption of a resolution to approve and authorize a supervisor's assignment agreement between the town and Eastern Managed Print Network to include toner, service supplies, and hardware for the town hall, police department, and highway at a monthly rate of $470, 2 cents for the average, excuse me, overage fees, $1.8 cents for black impressions, and 10 cents for additional color impressions. The agreement will be effective for three years, beginning on May 1, 2018.
Sergeant.
Any board comments or discussion? We looked at this, I'm just going to fill you in a little bit. I'm always looking, we're always looking to reduce the cost of government. So it's not a secret that we try to spend your dollar the way I would spend, or the way we would spend our own dollars at home. And we took a look at copiers, we took a look at toner. Right now, we're using about two hours a month to have my secretary actually do the ordering and check on the toner cartridges, and what we found was is that folks in, you know, with no harm do, but we're ordering toner cartridges for, you know, desktop printers, and then the printer, you know, doesn't work, and then we got these additional toner cartridges. So it just made sense to look into a, to look into this. I figured the hard cost would save us about $815 a year, which is not a lot, but it's your money. And the soft cost would be the hours, couple hours a month, that we're paying my secretary or your secretary on my behalf, my secretary on your behalf, to do that function. So anyway, and they'll also cover the repair or replacement of the printers. Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you. Website support. Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the agreement and authorize a supervisor to sign between Kishmish Incorporated and the Town of Cicero at a monthly fee of $85 and a one-time transfer fee of $400, effective 5/1/18 through 4/30/19. Budget code is A168041.
Session.
Any board discussion or comments?
Just a question. We're no longer using Code Monkey?
Correct.
Is there an additional fee for them if the $85 a month, what does that cover?
That covers, we're going to host the website here, not in California, and that also includes the, you know, the back-end maintenance as necessary.
But if we require maintenance here, is there an additional fee?
Not that I'm aware of. There's X amount of hours of, per year, that seemed to me, and to David Kirk handles all of our, Danny David Kirk, good guy, handles all of our website and Facebook, what you see. And after analyzing it, it made, to me, it made sense to bring it here to upstate New York, and that the hours allotted would be more than what we anticipated we would need.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following appointments to Parks and Recreation Department. Blake Props provisionally as the full-time recreation supervisor replaces Peter Bardot at a pay rate of $19.23 per hour, effective May 7, 2018. And Tyler Hertz is a seasonal park laborer at a pay rate of $12 per hour, effective May 21, 2018. Second.
Any board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We carry unanimously. Thank you.
Move for the adoption of a resolution to approve the following purchases for the highway department. $9,900 to Genuine MAPA for diagnostic machine scan kit.
That was a budgeted item.
This is for the new building.
Yeah, and that was a budgeted item last year.
$5,325.25 to Crown Corporation for Crown Corrosion Protection.
Sergeant.
Any board comments or discussion? Just one thing on this Crown Corporate Corrosion Protection. We calculated when the, one of the costs to the Town of Cicero not having a highway garage or facility that could house our equipment was we had a premature rust-out and wear-off. Because we're leaving a lot of equipment outside, nor did we have the capability of washing the salt brine off the frames or off the bodies of the trucks. We will have that, we will be able to do that in this new building. We calculated at the time that the Town of Cicero was losing about $200,000 a year in premature rust-out and wear-off. One of the components to that was, we shopped around and actually talked to some companies. This is a substance that will be sprayed on the, twice a year, on the undercarriages of all of our vehicles. So we'll clean the under, the salt and all the brine off, they'll be sprayed in the spring, and it'll be sprayed in the fall. Other towns have been using it. We were at, Don, where were we the last time we was using that product? Similar product.
Canandaigua, I think.
Well, it's at Canandaigua. The Canandaigua Highway folks were using it, they've had great luck with it. So it's something that we'll look at, $5,000 as opposed to $200,000. I mean, that just makes good business sense to me. Anyway, any other board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We pass unanimously.
Move the adoption of a resolution to approve $3,0391 to Syracuse Fire and Alarm Company Incorporated for a hand reader time clock and insulation of the new police building.
Sergeant.
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Agreement cancellation. Two weeks ago, we had a presentation by an energy company that was selected by the Association of Towns of New York State to provide a discounted electric rate to the Town of Cicero, to our buildings, not to the residents, but just to the buildings. There was another component for residential electricity shopping as well. They gave us collateral which would show a 17% savings off the kilowatt price and an annual savings of about, as I recall, like $9,800. $9,800, your money, sounds good, right? So we, the board approved it. However, when we got the contract, okay, with the final numbers, I found that the cost was one penny per kilowatt higher than what they had promised us. So consequently, I told them not to sign the contract, they got to come back with better rates. So that being said, I'll move for the adoption of a resolution rescinding, canceling, and terminating a master energy electric sales agreement between the Town of Cicero and Engie Resources LLC for the transmission and delivery of electricity to the Town of Cicero facilities. The town has reviewed and questioned some aspects of the proposed pricing plan contained in the final contract terms versus the presented materials. It takes this step to protect the town until Cicero and Engie can come to a satisfactory resolution and understanding. This resolution also authorizes the supervisor or controller to execute any required documents.
Sergeant.
Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? We pass unanimously. Thank you.
2017 annual financial report. 2017 annual financial report of the Town of Cicero has been completed and is on file in the Town clerk's office and also on the town's website at www.cicronewyork.net.
Any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Thank you.
Just informational...
Yeah, just informational. The Town of Cicero Park Protection Agreement, association and of persons for abusing an animal and trying to make this animal a vicious fighting dog. There was two dogs that were confiscated by our police department. They ended up at Animal Kingdom, and they had sent us a bill which was charged to the defendant, if you will. He's not a defendant anymore, he was prosecuted, to pay us back, was $3,000 in semi, whatever. And then we got another bill that this board approved a couple, two, three, four weeks ago, for the other dog that was not abused and was adopted out. And now we received another bill on the same animals for $2,688. I asked Mrs. Cosman to call the veterinary service today to get a breakdown, and they did not send us a breakdown, so I'm going to table this, and I don't think we should pay a bill unless we know what it's for. If that's okay, we'll pay that?
Yeah.
No questions? Great. Okay. Any discussion? Tracy, do you want to talk about her thing?
Secret.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a secret, right? Yes, I'm sorry. We had something here. Apologize. The, to pay for the police department building, you know, we got a grant from New York State which is being administered through DASNY. And at the last minute, DASNY reached out to the chief of police and said, "We can't pay you for the building unless you do a secret." So we put a secret together this morning, and I'll go ahead and read that. I'll move for the adoption of a resolution declaring a negative secret declaration for the purchase and grant financing of the new police building located at 6200 Route 31 in the town, in the town, for the paid consideration of $475,000, as well as the DASNY grant fund used to purchase the property. Purchase is classified as an unlisted action for the purpose of seeker compliance, and the action involves no permanent granting authorities outside of the town. The town has completed seeker EAF short form and has considered the potential environmental issues associated with the purchase and grant funding. The action will not create a negative effect upon the environment, and is not required to prepare, the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement.
Second. Second.
Uh, any further board discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. We carry unanimous. Thank you. Now, I'm sorry. Further day.
Yes, an excellent turnout. Uh, the weather definitely cooperated with us. We got some sunshine and I just wanted to extend to everyone who, uh, came and participated, um, the Highway Department, the parks for the use of the trucks, the volunteer police department for making it safe for us to, uh, do the four corners on eighty-one underneath the bridge and over by, um, Price Chopper, the fence there. It is very rewarding to go through those areas and see that they're all cleaned up. We did have the participation of the canteen this year, um, and those students, um, I definitely think will be coming back next year. It was, uh, it was definitely a rewarding, uh, environmental and community event that took place and I wanna make sure that I extend the thanks to everyone who participated.
Well, thank you. And at this point, um, we'll open the, uh, we'll open up public discussion when we might do it from the board. Yes, ma'am, please.
Hi. Dear board members, regarding Lake Shore Marina and Mud Mill proposed apartments, we have been told many times that the town board is a separate entity from the planning board. However, we've been also told by several times by the planning board meetings that because the town board did not have a comprehensive plan, because you wouldn't have to adhere to it, that basically the planning board's hands were tied. The property was, is currently known as Lake Shore Marina. The proposed property in question was part of a recent phase two master rezoning which included a hundred and three other parcels on Lake Shore, Mud Mill Beach, and Weaver Roads. During the public hearing held on February eighth, two thousand and seventeen, town supervisor Mark Vineski said, "We are looking to make the Town of Cicero and area skip. Will not infringe on the quality of life in our neighborhoods." The town board approved these changes. If this project is approved, it will definitely infringe on the quality of life of these neighbors and neighborhoods. And now for good, I feel the residents have been misled. I've lived in this neighborhood since I was three years old. A petition with eight hundred and sixteen signatures and comments was submitted at the December eleventh, two thousand and seventeen planning board meeting held at the Cicero Fire Station Route eleven. Hundreds of towns of Cicero voters were in attendance. Journal nine news recorded, "Thirty-five clubs of townspeople spoke at this only open meeting held by your planning board. Most concerns with traffic, density of project, quality of life of the nearby homeowners, some of whom have legal deeded right of way on the same land. Um, neighborhood compatibility, overcrowded schools, drainage, safety of townspeople, safety during and after project construction of a tidal lake, pollution and land runoff." Comments from the eight hundred and sixteen petition signers were hit similar concerns. Mr. Scott Freeman, representing Trade J Developers, stated in a planning board meeting, "The developer plans to cut down the hill on this property. Anything and everything will drain into a tidal lake." Mr. Freeman also stated, "If the planning board began the planning board meeting, the project will drain into the marina." They spoke of a copper dam at the marina, but the marina will also be open for business this summer. The company Trade J has a private problem in Frenchman's Bay, Louisiana. I have an article, if someone wants to read that, I'll submit it. I've not talked to a single person in favor of this project. The proposed large volume, density of buildings and people, cars, more cars, this along with fifty new homes from waiting, uh, going on from their waiting, the Lake Shore condos, more homes at Lions Run Cicero Center, the Torchwood at thirty-one pro- projects, and others will increase traffic and hazards of the town voters of Cicero. Two hundred and forty-eight one and two bedroom apartments gets five hundred plus people and five hundred more cars in that area. The latest traffic study the developer had done was conducted March fifteenth, a day that the North Syracuse School District had a half a day, had a two-hour school delay, according to the school. And that was due to excessive snowfall. Do you think there was an accurate traffic study? And we all know that the summer months are even busier in this area. What, another thing is, what happens to this project if phase two starts and they never fi- finish and they don't fill with such high-end rents? We're not scanning Atlas Lake nor Lake George. Is there any guarantee for this project and could HUD be involved? The current owner has every right to sell. Single-family beautiful homes, town homes, condominiums would be much more neighborhood compatible, not so dense. It's gonna be all roofs, all concrete, and all tightly with no green. It's thirteen acres with seventeen buildings, not counting all the garages, plus all the parking. I feel bad for the people in the single-story homes surrounding the proposed project who have been their lifelong residents. They already have a serious drainage issue and they're gonna have, they may have a view of a small city. Most of them have deeded like rights to this land, deeded right ways. Mark Marzullo said, "As for the planning board, we look, we look at the compatibility of the neighborhood and yet brings density to the equation." Many of the board members raised a lot of the concerns of the opponents of the residents. This was all at the February twenty-second meeting this year. The planning board's attorney, Neil Tremaine, sorry, responded, "You, um, you are exactly correct. You have the oversight of the density of this project. As part of your determination, you need to look at the density of the project and determine whether it's compatible with the surrounding area. Is it within your discretion, it is within your discretion to look at the effect that the proposed density would have on this man? The planning board not only has the right to scale back this project, it has the right to deny it, regardless of whether it is a town board or if there has a comprehensive I guess I said that in the latest traffic studies. I think you're up for reelection next year and I think that the town people will all remember this. Thank you for listening. Some of the people I think in the tenants might wanna hear any comments that you give.
Well, I will say this. First of all, if you give that to, um, the town clerk, he'll make sure it's, uh, in the record. And just, just so you know, and Neil, um, correct me where I'm wrong. First of all, I'm, I will not, and I'm just saying this as a citizen to another citizen, not, I won't say this to you. I'm not gonna share my feelings on this project. The planning board is a separate, uh, entity that has its own attorney, it has its own board, uh, they have their own engineer, uh, they are held to a, to make sure that they are being, that any project that comes in front of the town, um, meets the environmental, the traffic, the, uh, all of that stuff that they are required to verify. The attorney would sign off on it, saying that, yes, this is proper. The engineer would sign off if it is proper in fact, okay? So, um, my feeling personally is, is I am not going to, uh, share with anyone other than my wife. She knows how I feel about it. Uh, but I'm not gonna, uh, voice my opinion because I don't want to unduly, uh, influence a board, an independent board, um, nor do I want them trying to in- influence, uh, this board. Um, I don't think it's proper. I don't think it's ethical to do so. Um, so my, my opinion is, is I'm gonna keep to myself until, uh.
Do I have the other speakers?
Uh, Mr. Tremaine, can you address her, the issue with potential deeded access rights to this property where the.
Yes, I can. Could you? Yeah, there was, there was some deeded access rights, which, which I did in fact vet in detail. They, um, I asked at one of the meetings, I asked the people to present me with any easements that they had, any access rights that they had available. There was litigation concerning these access rights and it was never completed. So what you had is you had open litig- oh, yeah, sorry. You had open litigation and the court never placed where these, where these access rights actually are, okay? So I was unable to determine where they are because the court hadn't determined where they are. But I'll say this, none of these access rights run in favor of the town. They all run, they all allegedly run in favor of individuals. Any one of those individuals is free to go to court and assert their claim or their rights. There is nothing the planning board is doing that would prevent any individual from asserting. They're all private rights.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just say one thing unequivocally, because it seems to be a question. This board, they can all do it a hundred percent. It doesn't matter because they don't get involved. It's an independent, it's an independent board. And discussion of it, the discussion of the issue should take place at the planning board level, which is the board and the, the medium which is in charge of this, not, not the actual town board. That's the reason you have a planning board. This whole thing should be vetted as the planning board, which I will say has not made a decision on this project positive or negative today.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brison, if you'd like to speak, would you come up, please?
Okay. I understand what you're talking about, but you are the representatives of people in this town, not the planning board in the sense that they go to a meeting. Now, we've been going to the meetings and obviously we're not allowed to speak, like a mom board, okay? Everyone on the board has a, a problem with it. And when we're there, Bob Smith says, "We'll discuss that at the next meeting." Or at the next meeting, guy brings in a plaque with bricks on it to show us what kind of bricks are gonna go on these houses. It's like a dumb deal, guys. And again, I told Mark, you're the supervisor, you're the town board, you have responsibilities. I don't care if they're a separate entity. It doesn't mean that they commit and make a circus someplace in this town because they have the planning board, like a nightclub on Arkham Road. Bring me that. I'm just telling you, you're responsible. And I don't wanna hear you say, "Well, it's the planning board." No, it's you people. You were elected to this. They were appointed. You're elected. If you don't feel that way about the people in the Town of Cicero, I don't think you should run again. I think I'm going to run again. Seventy-nine, I'm not gonna run again, just to put somebody out. Again, we've been made fools of. Every time we've come to a meeting, it's been, Bob sits there and says he's in a apartment over by the post office, got a beautiful view. What the hell does that have to do with the lake? Okay? Can we, would he look out his window and see the post office? No, I disagree. We've tried, everybody has done it. The ev- and I know there are a lot of times, boy, they don't have a public hearing. Some of the stuff that's going to this town is not good for what's happening. I know Chick-fil-A was supposed to be the greatest thing in the world. Try going there. We were coming home from Price Chopper and I called up and I told him about this. The people who wanted to get into the right lane to get onto Route eleven to go into Chick-fil-A on a Saturday were coming off of four eighty-one, blocking two lanes of traffic because this side had cars from here to connect. And the people over here were starting off to Route eleven and making return. Now, that's our responsibility and I heard that they had, I'm sorry. But again, this is your planning board, this is what the town wants. It really wasn't the greatest place in the world to put it, but again, that's my opinion and half the people who act away from it. The other thing is, I don't know what you're doing. Again, there are a lot of good people in this town. They've been here fifty-one years. They didn't need you to get developed. We had good development going, we had a lot of commercialism going, but you guys don't give me that, that, that over there has more precedent over you. You're elected, you should pick.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to? Yes, sir.
John Cooley, U of Wood Circle Cicero. Pretty much identical with the other folks who said I've been to the previous meetings and just messaging to both the planning board and the town board. Your mission should be to make our town special and better. And the elements of this project, uh, is apartment-type units. Don't bring invested individuals into our town. Don't reflect demographic patterns, uh, so forth and so on. And just, again, message back to you that, uh, a better use of the property is available. You know, classy, single-family homes, patio homes, the type of things that would sell quickly and today's population are in demand. Our county population is not growing. Cicero is a bit, other areas are down. If somebody's got a pension to build apartments or other type units, our commones properties have been sitting available, city properties are available. These high-density units should be built in areas where services exist, like busing and the like, not on lake property. Be leaders, uh, the planning board, which answers to you in some kind of fashion, uh, needs to, within your powers, uh, be aware of what the people in Town of Cicero want. We want a nice community, uh, throughout, including on this property. Thanks.
Thank you. And anyone else? Yeah. Okay, two, three. One at a time. I just, I just, I don't have to, but I'm gonna make the comment. I, uh, we talked about, you know, will we, you know, don't, don't run for election or vote for you if you just think it's irrelevant. I'm, I'm not doing this because I have to. I, I retired from UPS in two thousand and eleven and as corny as it may sound, I'm doing this because I wanted to give back to my country. I'm beholden to knowing, I ask nobody for anything when I ran and I don't owe anybody anything. So I try to do the best I can to make the right decision for this community. However, there's some things that I'm legally able to do and some things that I'm not. That's all I'm saying. Yes, sir?
Yes. Pete Giordano. Um, I have no idea why I'm here. I mean, I got a piece of paper saying that, come on down and talk to you guys about the discussion, but what I've just heard is you guys had no.
We have no legal authority. That's correct.
Nothing to do with it.
That's correct.
Uh, so I'll forget everything I wrote here, but I would like to just say one thing. Uh, I've lived in, on Beach Road for forty-something years, um, and I just built a new house, so I have two places on Beach Road. I didn't know about this apartment complex or the change in zoning. And when I came down here the first time, they said, basically, "Well, if your property doesn't touch that piece of property, you don't have a say." Uh, and I'm trying to say, "Well, you, you didn't send me anything about the zoning change. I live a couple, you know, a block away on Beach Road. This is such a major project. How could the people who, in effect, not be informed that this was going on?"
Well, let me just, let me just try to correct the record. Um, number one, uh, we went on it and we still are. Um, we are rezoning proactively to Town of Cicero. We defined our business district, uh, two years ago and everyone who owned property and touched that property was postcarded. We had six public hearings. We utilized the newspaper, we utilized the website, uh, we utilized Facebook, um, our website, if you go to cicronewyork.net and put in an email address, we'll, the town will publicly, um, proactively, um, notify you of any, any meetings or anything that's happening, right? Um, the, when you take a look at, so we defined our commercial districts that had not been done before, right? So we're saying that, uh, along Route eleven from Bear Road all the way to, uh, Brewer Town, that is our commercial district and that is where we want businesses, uh, to locate. And we also had some areas around the airport, you know, which is commercial anyway, right? If you go to the airpark, you see G A Bron and those companies there. So we wanted to put, um, uh, we wanted to manage the process and it seems that the process has not been managed well before, okay? And then when we looked at the, uh, the Town of Cicero itself, the town, uh, has been, again, the zoning process for this town, in my opinion, has been poorly managed. So we had a spot zoning where if somebody was in a residential area and they wanted to open a business, they would come in, go in front of the town board, uh, and, uh, that could be granted and we had businesses, we had pieces of property carved out to be residential in, in industrial zones. We had split property all over the town where we had agricultural, partial, part of the property was agricultural, part of the property may have been residential, part of the property could have been, um, uh, industrial. And we actually had pieces of property that way. Well, what difference does it make? Right? We can say what difference it makes. Well, in two thousand and eight, when the housing market crashed, uh, the banks got real tough on lending money and, um, the definition or defining the, uh, the zoning of properties, right? And to talk to, um, our attorneys and to talk to, uh, our zoning folks, the, the cost to correct the zoning on a piece of property, you wanna buy or sell your house, you wanna buy or sell a piece of property in the Town of Cicero. Our goal was to make it easier for you to enjoy your property in the Town of Cicero and we took on the expense, for example. The number was set, and I, I thought it was a crazy number, but, um, um, I was told by zoning and by our attorneys, it's true. If you wanna rezone your piece of property to meet zoning for bank regulations or whatever, it's all agriculture, it's all residential, it's R ten, it's R fifteen, whatever the size of lot size is, you gotta hire an attorney, you've gotta come in front of the board, uh, you have to have. you've got to hire an attorney, you've got to come in front of the board, you have to have hearings on that, the board has to look at it, the board has to vote on it. The cost to you could be up to $10,000. So what we said was, is, "Well, wait a minute, you elected us to look at these problems and to fix them." So we took it upon ourselves to say, "All right, I mean, there's public hearings. If your property is affected, you will know about it. If your property is not, then, you know, watch for the various media, because we have 10,200 residences in the town of Cicero. And to notify everybody is a very expensive proposition, especially when you have a state and what's happening." So I hope that sheds a little bit of light on what you're trying to do.
That's fine. I'm just saying, you know, I don't do Facebook, I'm not on the internet. I would have liked to been notified that somebody's thinking of building 250 apartments down the street from me, so I could have some...
I think it's been well publicized, and I'm sorry that you didn't, you know, pick up on it. And I know there was a comprehensive review that was done right here in this auditorium with New York State DOT, Anadog County DOT, Anadog County Planning Board. And I don't, listen, I don't get in the weeds with that stuff because it's, there's an ethics issue for me to do that. However, I don't think that, as the attorney correctly said, I don't think the project, the project has not been approved. And the last I was told is the traffic study is back in front of Anadog County DOT, so they're reviewing it again. So that's all I can tell you, that's all I know.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Mark, can I mention one thing though? They hired someone to do a traffic report, and the gentleman stood up there and said that they have a way of getting the traffic off of Lake Shore. They're going to put it through six different roads to get that to Route 31. He's a housing...
I'm not going to comment on a project, and I'm just going to ask for rules of decorum if you come up and use the microphone. But I can't speak to that, because I don't know if I can see it. But I can tell you that the New York State Department of Transportation and Anadog County Department of Transportation have to sign off and say, "Yes, this is a workable plan." And to my knowledge, the state, I don't know where they are with it, but I know that they're still looking at it.
The gentleman that was here last week for Route 4 was, he said that one of the ways that they can take care of the traffic, get it off of Lake Shore, is you have six roads that connect from Lake Shore and Route 31. Snowshoe, Barton, this, Wything, and this, and this, and this. The point is that those are houses that people live in. And about a week, two weeks ago, there was an attorney over at the North Syracuse Library who would help you with questions and stuff, and I went over there and asked her, "Can they do that?" And she says, "No, they can't do that. You can't use any street you want to retract it." That's what I'm just saying. You guys don't understand everything that's going on. And the other thing, believe it or not, the attorney lives on Lake Shore Road, which really fascinated me, and she had said she's already seen people going down and trying to get to 31 and passing school buses. And that's my concern, school buses, okay? And as a matter of fact, that's the concern of the North Syracuse School District.
I can't, I can't speak to that, Pat. That's not my, that's...
Yeah, but so, but again, I keep going back to you guys, because we're the ones that are...
We can't tell the planning board how to vote on an issue.
Well, you say it's on us, what would you have us do? I don't get a vote. Would you have us remove the entire planning board? Because that would, that would completely eliminate the purpose of having an independent planning board.
If you have a plan, you have a planning board that's flipping out of the town.
Excuse me. The planning board, I've let you speak, and I'm going to let you speak in response, in case you're going to have something to say. The planning board's independent for a reason. You know, it's fine to sit there and point the finger at us and say, "It's up to us," but there's literally nothing that we can do at this point. I can, we can be as sympathetic as, well, I don't live over there, but I hear a lot of things from people, and I understand people have legitimate concerns. Bottom line is, it's fine to say that it's up to us, but there's literally nothing we can do, and if we wanted to...
Again, I had mentioned to you once before that I was on a town board for ages.
I know where you are.
Okay.
Then you should...
But the point is, no, we had, no, no, no. We had communication all the time. We didn't let them be an entity all by themselves, believe me. And I have seen it happen because...
Mrs. Brizel.
Wait, let me finish. Because one day when I, when I was up there, the veterinarians over there, I walked across the street and I see this whole plot of land being wiped down, and there's these trusses for a roof, and it's like forty foot, fifty foot. So I call the town, and I ask the zoning office, "What's going on there?" "Well, it's Richard Conjo's new voting place." And I said, "Oh," I said, "Does he have a plan? He hasn't set, he hasn't put a site plan in yet." "I'm sorry, guys, you're an entity?" "No, that's, that's not an entity. It's part of this town, and you should be knowing what's going on." It doesn't mean you go and tell them what to do, but you have the right to ask once in a while. And like I said before, I was with Bill Myers, and I was with Bill Bradley. Eight years we were there, we never had an argument, and we always had people coming back and forth, back and forth.
There you are, what's happening. I'm just not going to tell people how to vote or what they should be doing, because there's an ethics issue with that. So anyway, councillor, you had something you wanted to add?
No, just, other than I say you're absolutely right, you do not have a say, you do not have a vote, and you should be careful about lobbying an independent board.
There's ethics issues involved.
I need to correct something that was just said. Conjo did start to build a facility, and we found out that he was doing it, meaning our code people found him. And we canceled it, we stopped him. He was drilling holes, getting ready to put up his pole barn. He has got now a, in fact, he found out that that site was too small based on what we were going to let him do to do his business. So he then put another site plan in, which is further up Route 11 on the left-hand side. So when the planning board or the code office, and we, the people, should in fact not be afraid to call the code office and say, "Look, has Don Snyder at 63, 61 Mudville Road, he got a permit for the garage he's building in the backyard?" That's not, you know, that's not a tattletale type thing. It's going to help the person that's going to buy the house later, it's going to help our taxes, a whole number of things. So we need to make sure that we, in fact, are active in our community and... Enough.
Yes, sir.
Paul Ayrman, Lake Shore Road. I'm upset with all of you. You're getting defensive. We're frustrated, and we're expressing our frustration. So don't get defensive. I mean, we're not, who do we argue? We can't argue with the other board.
Wrong thing, Bob. I don't...
I mean, I apologize if the elephera's defensive, I've just, you know...
I thought, you know, Burr doesn't say anything, but he's listening. And, you know, I know, yeah, it just, it was upsetting to me. Now, I do have a question. It was a business, Lake Shore Marina. Okay. Was it, how is it, you've changed the residential now, or how'd you do that?
No, what we did on, what we found on Lake Shore Road is we had a lot of, the zoning wasn't reflective in, not all cases, but many cases of the actual use. So we had, we had, for example, Boreos is operating as a restaurant. But they weren't, I believe that Boreos, if I had it right, was one of the properties that came up, but they weren't all zoned correctly. Where we had Avi Abraham's property, which he's operating as a marina. I know, we all know Avi, but it was operating as a marina, but it wasn't, it wasn't zoned correctly. So what we did is we, we made the, I'm going to say, it wasn't the best guess, but it was an intelligent, I thought, an intelligent, thoughtful process to zone the properties, some of those properties, as they were already in him and being used for a long time. And that was our, that was our thought. And also to clean up a lot of the residential properties that we had on Lake Shore Road.
All right. I'm just talking about the Lake Shore Marina.
Yeah.
What was that zoning?
I don't know. I don't think we changed the zoning on that, I don't know. I heard it was...
It was agricultural and residential?
I have to ask you if I don't know. I can't answer that question.
It was residential. Yes, the house was residential. The property itself, the use of the property was a marina. The rest, but it was zoned and residential.
So that's not a problem for the apartments?
No, because of the use. It was, it was, the use of the property was, and it's been fifty years, it's been used as a marina.
It's important to remember with codes, that if a property is given a use variance, that variance stays with the property. So even if it's sold, the new people have a right to assume operators of marina before we can continue to operate as a marina. And that is, in fact, what the law sets.
Thank you, councillor. So if it was zoned as agricultural, well, clearly, if it was zoned agricultural and, as councillor Boigie said, and I don't know, I'm going to take a word on this, that it was also residential, well, you're operating a business out of there, you're operating marina, so it wasn't, it wasn't zoned properly.
But now they're not, so...
Well, I mean, it's still, I mean, to operate a marina.
But it had a use variance, which allowed it to be operated.
And everybody likes Dicky Strode, but, you know, I mean, that's not the point, you know? Why can't he lower his taxes?
I beg your pardon?
He says he can't make a business there because he can't make enough money. Those taxes are due, I mean.
I don't know. I can't speak to that, I don't know.
I have to get that off my chest.
Oh, no, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Sal Herman, I'm in Ashamond Drive. My concern is with the planning board. They're not listening to, I think, nobody wants this. It's like they're going to shove it down their throat, whether anybody wants it or not. It's like, that's what they want, so that's what they're going to do. It just doesn't seem, and who's going to move there? They're saying, young professionals. They're not moving out to Cicero. They're moving downtown, they're moving into Armors Square. They're not going to move out here. I think what they're trying to do is they're just shoving something out.
I can already tell you what I know, I can't tell you what I don't know, right? Councillor Park, we also have an attorney on the board. I can tell you this, it has nothing to do with what they want, the planning board wants. There is, there is allowable uses for property. So, for example, I'm just, I don't know, John will come up with a better idea, because he's better at this, he's a real estate attorney. But if you, if you want to put a deck on your property that's going to be facing my house, and I don't want it, because I don't want to look at you. Not you personally, but I don't want to look at you, whoever the neighbors... Just because I don't like it doesn't mean that it's not allowed, and that you can't do what you want with your property.
So basically, you're saying there's nobody that can stop this?
I'm not saying that. No, because there is people who can stop it. DOT can stop it. EPA can stop it.
Well, if I may...
Please.
The project, the reason it's in front of the planning board per se, I'm not clear, was the site has to be that. So when they go in and you want their permitting, they go in and plan with the per se site plan, the planning board will evaluate that site plan based on, you know, all their criteria. But the use is one thing that we really aren't going to evaluate, because that is a, you know, the use is a permitted use. That being said, just like I was quoting earlier, there's a million other things that the planning board would look at along the process. And I don't think it's fair for you to say that the planning board hasn't listened to one side or the other, because they haven't even been ruling it. You can think that they're leaning one way, but...
Well, just when we talk about traffic, I leave to go to work between 7:30 and 8:00, and there are times to try and get down to Route 31 to get on 81. I'm already, I'm bit by the school, and that's a long way to get down, and it's just...
Traffic, there's no question about traffic, it's one of the issues that's been discussed.
It's probably the biggest issue.
No question about it. Adlands that the planning board love, and the planning board will evaluate that and say, "It's okay or it's not okay." Not ever.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Germaine, so planning, it's an allowable use, the planning board has to clearly articulate the reason why they're denying the project, correct?
Right. They can still, they can still deny, they can still deny a project. They can deny allowable use based on a number of other aspects of the project. So you could have an allowable use, but you could have a project in such a way designed that it's dangerous, and the planning board could deny it. Whether it's going to be adverse to the environment, and the planning board could deny it. There's a lot of calculus that goes into how the planning board will vet the project, but one of the things that the planning board cannot change is the actual allowable of the use that's already established.
One more, sir. Yes.
So, having been to the planning board meeting, this, the planning board meeting debates quality of life issues? And you seem to do quality of wallet stuff from what I've listened to tonight? So I looked a few things up today, and this may or may not be relevant to planning board, but putting...
That's not true, by the way. Go ahead.
Well, anyway, so according to 2013 EPA estimates, the average three-person household uses between eight hundred to ten, I'm sorry, eight to ten hundred cubic feet of water a month. So with the number of units there, we're talking about 250,000 cubic feet of water usage per month for that facility, which is going in and going out. I live on Shelman Road, and the only sewerage facility that I'm aware of is on Mudville Road, and that pumping station looks totally inadequate to handle that increased amount of water.
But the figures you're quoting are people living in single-family residences, correct? Apartments use less water.
Well, they also, they detailed that a bathtub is thirty-six gallons of water, that a toilet with three-gallon flush, because that's, I guess, the rule today, sixty-eight flushes per day, eighteen to twenty-four gallons. I mean, I can go through it that way.
Oh, no, no question. I'm just saying it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And I'm not even saying that you're pointing, I'm just saying it's not an apples-to-apples comparison.
Well, I use a lot of water on my lawn, but I'd advise it if I was an apartment. Sure, for example. Sure.
And is there a difference between a toilet and apartment, and what that uses is more...
No, you're saying what it is. No, there's not. No. Well, that's a two-person household, and they said they were going to have one bedroom, two bedrooms, so... And a two-person, it's four to seven hundred cubic feet, so take a lower estimate. Solid waste, according to 213 estimates, is twenty thousand cubic feet per month for a three-person household. That's for that size of facility, forty thousand cubic feet of extra solid waste that we get. So we're all going to have to pay for that. I don't think the taxes per...
WEP looks at that water environmental protection?
Sorry?
WEP, water environmental protection?
This is EPA.
Looks at capacity. You're talking about pump stations in the town of Cicero and sewer capacity?
Well, that was the first one, that was water.
Okay.
That was the first one, that was water. That's, two hundred and fifty thousand, this is solid waste. The average household, what the average three-person household produces, one hundred and fifty-eight cubic feet per month. So if you take the fact that there's about two hundred people there, that's forty thousand cubic feet per month. Now, I know we hired some outside person to do it, we don't move it to the town, but we all have to pay for it. And I don't know whether the taxes on an apartment is the same as I pay as a resident's owner, whether both for my toilets and my water and my...
County assesses that, we don't assess it.
Right. Right. Well...
And they approve, they are in the approval process when they look at, when they look at sewer plant capacity and also line capacity, so...
So is that the planning board, or...
No, no, that is water environmental protection. WEP, Anadog County WEP.
Right.
Looks at all that. And if we didn't have the capacity, obviously, the capacity is determined to go to the projects.
So this project has to go in front of...
It goes in front of a multitude of agencies. That's correct.
Well, as you are, the people who do the taxes, doesn't like, I mean, calling it wallet stuff.
We collect them and turn it over to the county.
It seems like we need building, you know, we got Target and all of that, and I don't see where my taxes went down. Actually, it's a commercial development, so if you're going to put this in, then it's going to load more.
There's nothing we're doing, and I look at taxes, I'm just going to say them and we'll break it up.
Thank you.
But the, you know, part of the problem that people don't realize is that, you know, the town of Cicero has a lot of, a lot of room where I believe that we can grow business that will pay taxes to the town of Cicero and takes the burden off us, the homeowners. When you take a look at the town of Clay, for example, drive down Route 31, look at the car dealerships, look at the malls, look at these strip malls, they pay huge dollars into the town of Clay. And that money is used, you know, for, you know, road repairs, you know, for, you know, for all of the services that the town of Clay provides. So if you look at the cost, I, this is a business term for those of you, but the cost to serve, right? Our cost per resident here is higher to serve, because we don't have the tax base. So part of the thing, one of the things, and listen... So, part of the thing, one of the things, and, and listen, I, I'll tell you right now, if, um, there is no one gets a free ride in the town of Cicero, okay? Here, here, you're paying taxes. I mean that to the businesses. We don't do pilots, uh, you know, paying as a group taxes. We actually demand that taxes be paid. And if you don't believe it, you can talk to some of the, the business owners here. The bottom line is this, we can, and part of what you quoted me was correct, not all of what I said. We can, we can grow the town of Cicero responsibly and preserve, for the most part, the quality of life, right, of our neighborhoods. But there is going to be some balance. So the bottom line is this, we have crumbling roads, the cost to serve goes up every year, some costs we cannot control. I can't control our pension costs, I cannot control our, what we have to pay into New York State, healthcare and all that stuff that's dictated to us by the, um, by the county and by the state, right? Uh, if you take a look at your tax bill, we're about twelve to fourteen cents on a dollar. Sixty cents next year will go to the school district, out of every dollar that you spend in taxes. The remainder of twenty-eight cents will go to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine cents. It's split between county taxes, property taxes, and sewer taxes, if you bill. So, you know, the, the cost to serve continues to rise, and we can do, we can, you know, we, and, and the roads are in bad shape, so all those things. So we can try to subsidize what it costs for us to live here by responsibly bringing businesses in and telling, telling them where they can locate, that hasn't been done before. Uh, or we can, the town can, whether it be me or anybody else sitting up here, uh, can continue to raise property taxes on the homeowners to continue to provide the services. Got to clog the roads, we got to fix them. We have police protection, we have good police protection. We have great services, uh, that we provide here. And, but it costs money. So we try to control our costs to the best of our ability. Uh, I've done that, phone me, call me. I'll show you where we have reduced our costs significantly in the past two years. But I also have to, as I, as we run the town as a business, and that's the way I look at it, I also have to have the res- the revenue to cover my costs. And in light of the fact that we stopped borrowing money, uh, the town was borrowing money, as most of you know. We stopped borrowing, we're paying our bills, we're paying cash, and, uh, we were rewarded with a double A credit rating last year from Standard and Poor's. So, and I, I live here too, and, and we're trying to juggle it the best we can. Uh, and I think we're doing, overall, I think we're doing a pretty good job, but if we're not, fellas. Yes, one more. Please come up.
Good evening. My name is Willain Hammond, and I'm here on behalf of my daughter, my grandson, my son-in-law. They live at 881 Beach Road. This apartment will be in their backyard. And it hurts me because here was a young couple that bought their home when they were twenty-three years old, and they bought it for the area, for the solitude, for the community. And everyone's been throwing that word around, but what is the definition? I looked it up today. It's a social group sharing common characteristics or interests and perceived, or perceiving itself as distinct in some respect from the larger society within it. We are a town. We have enough businesses. You say road usage. The more businesses, the more roads get torn up. When this apartment complex is built, which I'm pretty sure it's going to be, for one thing, it's on a flood plain. Where's that water going to go? It's going to go into the lake. It's going to go into my daughter's yard. Their quality of life is going to suck, to put it bluntly.
So, my, 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 I ask you, because we've, we've, I've listened to a number of people, and we've tried respectfully to say that this board has no direct influence, and it would be an ethics issue if we tried to do something so... And, 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 and I'm listening to what you're saying, but I don't know that, that, I'm, I'm assuming that what you're saying is true, but I don't know that, you know, water's going to be going into the lake. I don't know that, because I know that that's a, a environmental consideration that the Army Corps of Missioners looks at very closely as well. So what, what, what is your point? What would you like us to do?
I mean, I'm looking at, there's, there's just a, there's so many things to look at. Um, I hear the, the word, you know, protect the environment, that, that, that has come up so many times tonight. To me, Bill...